Good evening.
Good evening.
Want to call our meeting, regular council meeting of October the sixteenth, twenty twenty-five to order. And at this time, I will ask our last chair, Mr. John Chaney, to leave this in the invocation.
Father God, amen to you. We come right now, and we thank you for all the blessed you've bestowed upon us. We thank you for bringing us up this morning in attendance, having the Father be traveled up and down the dangerous hour today. Amen to Father, we come here tonight, gathered in this meeting, and we, Father, to make the best decision for the citizens of Allendale and for Allendale County in whole. We actually thank you for all your blessing, and just on Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Vice Chair Chaney. We'd like to declare a quorum. We do have the majority of the members here tonight, so we'll move forward. Down to item four, approval of the minutes of our last meeting. We're going to postpone that if the minutes are incomplete. And we'd like to say a special welcome to I Councilwoman Jennings. We were hoping you would get here, but John was pushing me to start on time.
I'm here.
We're down to item five, approval of the agenda.
Sheriff, I'm moving through the agenda.
Second. Moving properly second, that we approve the agenda of our regular council meeting of October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Any question? All in favor, let it be known by Saint I.
Aye.
Poses, aye, sir. Once again, welcome. Hadn't had such a crowd since, I'd like to butt you maybe, so, but anyway, thank you for being here. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our chairperson of the personnel committee. And we're going to have Councilman White, Jamie White, to kind of give us a little introduction and a little briefing. I will ask council to share their thoughts, and we'll move forward. We will do it as punctual as we can. I think it's a good time and a sad time. And at this time, Councilman White.
So, Mr. Chair and all the citizens of the county, it gives me a great pleasure that there are so many with us tonight. Because there are so many here with our good friend and former employee, Mr. Carl Graham, who has given his service to Allendale County over the past sixteen years. We know that in the last couple of years, things have been a little rocky. But Mr. Graham has been a testament of perseverance, of faith, of duty to his job. He's been an inspiration, and we just thank him for all of the years of service that he has given. And in particularly, like we said, the last couple of years, he truly has been inspiring to the county for the work that he's done. Not only is he a citizen of Allendale County, a former employee of Allendale County. I'm proud to say he's my church member. I've been knowing him all of my life, and we're sorry to see him go. But we know that, you know, in life, we have to move to different phases. But we just wanted to take the time to honor you tonight, Mr. Graham, Brother Carol, for your years of service to Allendale County. And we just thank you for it. We know that August twenty-ninth, was it, was your, that was your last date? Yes, sir, August twenty-ninth, but the legacy that you left will never be forgotten, will always be with us.
I did, Councilman White, we're going to go around, Councilman Cohnley.
I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to give a bit about it.
I wanted to be off the cuff anyway.
Yeah, well, certainly, we appreciate your hard work and dedication to the county for, I think, what, sixteen years? It shows your dedication, and we certainly appreciate it and wish you the best in your future endeavors. Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair.
Carol. I knew Carol for quite a few years. I met him when I was a trooper and also as a magistrate in Allendale. If ever we called, he was always on time. And like you said, we hate to see you go, but sometimes things happen in life that's best for you. And I think this is the best when you can retire and still have your health and strength. And we wish you good luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jennings.
Thank you. I've known Mr. Graham before I became a member of the council. I've known him for years. But since I've been on council, if I've ever called on him to do anything, you know, he was always pleasant. The smile that you see on his face now, anytime you saw Mr. Graham, he had that smile. He was always willing to help you do anything that you needed to do. And I appreciate your service, you know, while I was here, you were here, and I appreciate what you've done. And I wish you well in your retirement and hope you do well, but thank you so much for your service.
Thank you for giving that opportunity. Carol, lastly, they've said everything that I wanted to say. Except, yeah, say it again, except the fact that you've certainly been my neighbor, you and your family, for years. And I've known your family all my life. Certainly, I was here, Walter and I was here when you came in sixteen years ago. And we kind of kept track of how well you were doing, even during that tenure of Mr. Paul as the manager. You know, we kept close track on how you were doing, you know, as a person. And we can't repay you for the time you spent and your service to this county. It's been awesome. Just like everyone had said, we wish you the best. Things in life sometime don't go the way we want. I know your family is, you know, happy to have you home and have you back, and we hope you continue to progress. And, you know, we don't have many sixteen-year employees. They don't usually last that long, so. But you did, and we appreciate your service, your time. And want to give you a moment to say something before I present the little plaque here.
I always give all to God first in my life, and without this, it's going to be possible without him. And I want to thank Allen County for accepting my application at that time. And it's been wonderful ever since. I had great fun servicing and doing the thing that's supposed to do with my job. Around the county, it's been fun, and I enjoy it. I'm going to miss you. I already miss you. I told some coworkers a little about that and say, you know what? In many mornings, I got a lot feeling well, but I came to work, and there's something about coming to work and getting feel better.
And that's right.
Many mornings felt better when I came to work, and that's why it's so hard to keep you home. When you see me this coming to work, you know I was there and that. So, I really appreciate the pleasant atmosphere that was formed by the county and the people I worked around. It was fun, and I love you all, and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And Carol, the flag read, presented to you, Carol Graham, in recognition of your sixteen years of service and commitment and dedicated service to the citizen of Allendale County, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. And on a personal note, I'd like to say, my mom always depended on you. She always said, "Call Carol." You can take care of it, so we certainly have had you part of allies for a long time, so we will continue to wish you the best. Okay. Counselor, you want to come? Let Walter take a quick picture here. Trying to get the family in. If you want, it's already safe, but you got to flow in, so. I want to thank you for all the country. Once again, it's been great, it's been great, it's been great. Well. When you get in the area, come on and say, "Oh, we're here."
I want to take a little look at this thing.
Yeah. That's right, that's right. I had hoped to get the family a picture, but we brought them up here, but yeah, please. Carol, want to introduce the family? I don't know all, but you might want to. I'm the youngest, Brother Johnny Graham. Oldest, George.
Sister, Lou Dean. My husband, Ray. My granddaughter, Charlie. And this daughter, April.
Sister, now Georgia.
Good friend, Nathan Jones.
Bert and Graham, I'm the wife.
Thanks everybody for being here. Thank you, last one.
All the major people were here too.
Excuse me? Well. Help us out, man.
Now, it's okay now.
Well. I wish, I wish to hold proud of that. I'm sure they will have an opportunity to speak with, okay, very good. We're going to move ahead. And Valerie, you know, in the future, you know, give us a heads up if you want us to do something, just let us know. We're very accommodating here, you know. We don't always see the whole picture, but we, you know. And we, your input and input from the citizens certainly, I don't mind. Okay, because you know how to do it. Very good. We're down to public comment. First on the list is Ann Rice.
I always have something to say though.
Man?
I say I always have something to say.
Well, you always have something good to say, so that's the only reason why you're number one.
Good to meet everybody. First of all, I want to update you a little bit on what Kitchin County Beautiful's been doing. We had our cleanup, and we did not have as much participation as we normally do. So I want to urge everybody to, maybe if they didn't get to go out and pick up, go back and pick up. But we did our, started our little survey of the county today, and I'm pleasantly surprised everywhere we've been looks great. So I really was pleased. This is one thing I'm going to call your attention to, and I don't know if it's your responsibility, I did or not, but at Coates Bluff Landing, in the parking lot, you know, those strips that you park in case?
Parking strips.
It's hard to see that they need to be painted. I'm afraid somebody's going to run in them and hurt a truck or a tire or something. So I don't know who needs to take care of that, but you can't see it, but you ride, you know, in the parking lot.
Mr. Terry already raising his hand.
So that, that needs to be taken care of. It's just something I noticed, because Alan will train in the morning. So, but anyway, this is.
What color do you suggest?
I guess yellow, Hawaii, yellow Hawaii. Those are some you look out for. The others to bring up today are South Carolina two fifty, Allendale County. The South Carolina two fifty had its display of the Revolution of War at the State Fair. They still do it in the Rupp Building, this whole building, and it's fabulous. If anybody's going to the State Fair, they need to take time to go through that building, because it's really great, stood nicely. But they asked Kitchin County to send some volunteers to help. We had twelve volunteers from our committee group, which is more than any other county. His volunteers, I was very proud that we were able to do that and have a good show at Allendale County. And they said they'd like to adopt our volunteers. The other thing is, they, along with Allen County Starkside, is sponsoring a program of November the ninth at the fair at three o'clock. Bill Seagull is doing it, and it's on Churches Burned in South Carolina During the American Revolution. And Rachel has seen him do this at different locations, said it was a wonderful presentation. So I hope all of you will make an effort. I've got flights, you know, anybody else, so, but I hope you'll make an effort to do it. And.
Is that the Shelton Church?
Shelton Church, yeah. But there were lots more in South Carolina that were burned. So, and just on the museum, the engineer and architect were there last week. They said they should have the documents back for us to look at next week. So, moving along, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Now, we officially, we hear from the trailer, Valerie Sprecher.
Good evening. I just wanted to let everyone know, because everyone may not read the paper or anything, that taxes are going to begin for twenty twenty-five. So if anybody wanted to know what their taxes are, they can call in the office. They are on the books, ready to go. So we are asking you to come early, come pay, come pay your taxes now. We appreciate it, with some work went into it, but with the auditorium myself and all the others that were involved, they are on the books now. They're ready to be, open to be paid. So if you got any questions or anything, you can go online and pay, or either you can come in the office and pay. Thank you.
They've been mailed out then, huh?
They've been mailed out. I think they've started mailing, I think, Monday. I want to say Monday they were mailing.
Has anyone here got your tax notice?
But we already got a payment. Somebody already, we got people paying, so that's, that was good. But they're probably going to probably, if they were mailed Monday, so you'll probably be the end of this week or so before someone probably gets it. But if they want to know what it is, they can go online and see. We don't have to wait for the notice. We are ready for you.
Sounds great. We appreciate it. Okay. We're down to visitors. And at this time, I'm going to let Mr. White introduce our visitor from CCNI.
Sure. I invited Mr. Wayne Willis of CCNI, who is the company that handles our inspections and also our permitting process. I wanted him to come just to give some insight as to how the permitting and inspections are conducted in the county. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, our inspections and those types of things. And I think it would be good for the citizens just to have an understanding of how that process goes. And I wanted them to hear directly from the company that handles that. So I invited him to come, and I would ask that if anyone has any questions of Mr. Willis, that they aren't about specific projects, because he can't speak to, you know, can't call names and all of those things. But if you have questions about how things are done, he might be willing and able to address those questions. Also, in Counselor's Packet, there are some reports that Mr. Willis provided of the inspections that have been, excuse me, the permit and permit applications that have been submitted. And also, there's another, another piece of information that was submitted by Deputy Administrator, Mr. Wade Robinson. So while he's giving his information, if we have any questions regarding anything regarding those reports, we can ask.
I just got one question before Mr. Willis get going. Does the two report do they match pretty good?
Yeah, they, yeah, they kind of intersect. There might be some things on some that are on one that's not on the other one, but, you know, we'll, yeah.
Okay.
For the most part.
For the most part. Well, Mr. Willis probably can tell you the part that does it, so. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'm actually not a very good speaker, but I'm pretty good at Q and A, so I'm hoping that you have questions. So I was just asked to come down and talk about the permitting process and payment process. Basically, we're going over permitting fees and things of that nature, which I understand we're doing. There's a, on our website, there's a price fee for permits there. So if you have a project that's going on, you can go to that price schedule and figure what the permit fee would be for your project. It's basically, it's based off of total cost of work. So what some people don't understand is that is labor and materials. Whatever those materials are, plus the labor that it's going to take in order to do that, that total dollar amount is actually figured by. One thing I can go into and explain, state law talks about piecemeal. And believe it or not, that's actually the wording that it uses. So when you start to do a project, for instance, a commercial project under ten thousand dollars can be done by a business owner. Let's say that I owned a pet store, and I needed to do some upgrades, and that total dollar amount was going to be under ten thousand dollars. State law allows me to do it myself. If I rent the building, I need to get permission from the building owner to do so, and we just require an notarized letter from the building owner that they're allowing you to do these changes to the building. But going into that, about the ten thousand dollar amount, you can't do the electrical and say, that's going to be five thousand dollars. Do the plumbing, that's two, and then the building's going to be ten, and I'm going to get separate permits. And that's what they're referring to when they say piecemeal. It's a project. And some people like to refer to it as phasing. Phasing's okay too, when we have a lapse of time in between those. So that's what the law says in regards to total dollar amount and how you get permits and things of that nature. So I'm hoping that you have some questions.
All right, so, Mr. Willis, you, I know that one of the reports you submitted, I asked you to submit for a planning and zoning commission meeting, and that information was presented at that last planning and zoning meeting. And also, we received that report that was generated by Deputy Administrator. Just to give an example, you said that those fees were based on the total cost of work. I noticed, just to give an example, like I said, I'm not getting into specifics. But there was one, let's just say, one company, it was a commercial project, where it said that this is just cost of construction was stated as one point two billion dollars. And it says total fees were one thousand fifty-seven, total payments were one thousand fifty-seven. And then right under it, there's a cost of construction for someone for a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and total fees were eleven twenty-nine, one thousand one hundred twenty-nine, and total payments were one thousand one hundred twenty-nine. So what caused that when we were reviewing that, when it was being reviewed in planning and zoning commission, that just kind of threw a red flag, because it's like, there was one construction cost that was very high, right, right?
I'd have to ask, was that when we started doing the permitting, or was that prior to us taking over with the Iowa program?
And I'm not, this was, let's see, this was in May, May of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I believe we started like it was mid-June.
Okay, okay.
But I do have some things that I want the lead council to look at, if it's prior to us taking over as far as complete takeover of the building department. Of course, what I mean takeover is using hot and the software, as opposed to Allendale's agreement with Iowa.
Got you. Okay.
And during that transition too, there was some that got permitted through the old system here in Allendale. So there was kind of a transition period there, that it didn't all come over to our office.
I have one question, and something I get a call on occasionally. When you have different inspectors coming out, and maybe one inspector finds something a little different maybe than the other, is that, is that an issue that you see much, or once you start a project, is there a way to keep that inspector on that job just to make sure you don't run into that problem?
It's logistics. As I explained earlier today, we talked about that same thing. So we also do state projects for OSF and OSU, which we've done here. The university over there, we've done some of those projects. With OSF, that's the Office of School Facilities, they have a program which is called Preferred Inspectors. Preferred inspectors are only able, preferred inspectors have to go do low ceiling inspections and files. So those people are qualified and approved through the Office of State Facilities to do those inspections in lieu of OSF actually coming and doing the inspections. So there's times that we have those inspections that are due, and I have to send one of those preferred inspector over.
When you inspect and find a problem, do you give a written report, or is it all verbal?
No, sir, there's, we use Iowa program, and so when we finished with the inspection, the inspection report is emailed to the permit holder. And anytime they can call and ask for a re-read email, but they also can set up an account. So a lot of contractors will set up an account, so that they can actually request inspections through the port. They can go in and view their inspection reports anytime they want. And the thing is, with the Iowa program, when you create an account, that account will work at any location that they're going to deploy a permit that we provide service for.
I, I, one final question for me. Whenever a project starts, are all of the fees that are going to be charged with, you know, inspections and anything like that, are all of those things explained prior, like at this stage, we're going to, you know, have to do an inspection for this, 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 this? Because there's, and I will say this, there's a perception sometimes that, you know, folks are getting blindsided by, you know, certain fees. certain fees, certain inspections or whatever. So is, is everything outlined? If, if they tell you what the project is and this is what's going to be done, do you go through, the C C and I go through and explain everything that's being done through the project?
As far as inspections?
As far as inspections and?
No, sir. If they need something as far as what they will need as far as inspections, then we have what's called a general inspection schedule that can be emailed to them.
Okay.
And then you just fill in the blanks as far as your, what you're doing, your scope of work, at when you would need those inspections. Which, for instance, if plumbing under slab, if you're doing that, it'll tell you that you need to call any inspection prior to cover. So don't cover anything up until you've had it inspected on that one. You can say mechanical above ceiling. Don't put in ceiling tiles until you've had that inspection. That's, that's the description of when you need to call for an inspection.
How does our fee compare statewide? Are we pretty much on the same curve?
So the, the, the current fee that was agreed upon is one that we use for probably 90% of the ones that we do. We do it 30 jurisdictions. And 28, well, 27 of them actually use that fee schedule.
Okay.
Some, some adjust it, they want to go down, some adjust it, they want it to go up. That's, that's entirely up to the jurisdiction.
And what's, what schedule do we have for, for our reimbursement? Is that on a monthly or quarterly?
That's monthly.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Are we, we up to power now?
I'd have to check with the C F. That's her. I don't, I don't believe in her, but I can ask her the question.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I do. And you are? Jeff Byrd, I'm a registered voter and a taxpayer in Allen Dale County.
Jeff Byrd?
B Y R D.
B Y R D.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Byrd? I don't have a problem, uh, council don't have a problem? Just, yes, sir, go ahead and ask your question.
Did I not understand you at the meeting out there in the Hallmark? That you said you had to have the electrical plans to go ahead and finish the final inspection?
For the gas pumps, yes, sir.
Okay. Did anyone ever inform them about?
Uh, yes, sir.
You had, you had somebody else out there that said everything was A okay?
I don't know who that would be.
It was the guy that came before you, one of the gentlemen said he looked like a dare hunter?
Yes, sir.
Did he tell, did he need a set of electrical plants?
I wasn't there, I couldn't tell you. Randy and I have had a conversation through this project very lots of times. So if Randy didn't know that he needed to do that, all he had to do was call. We had a conversation a long time.
He knew, he could call, he could ask even if he needed it, but nobody had signed it during.
We had a conversation about the gas pumps long before the slab was taken.
Mr. Byrd, Mr. Willis?
Yes, sir.
I thought you had one of those questions that could be answered with a yes or no. I think it's kind of going a little further than we have time for, so I would ask that.
No, sir, I just wanted to clarify that we're not informing about everything I needed.
That's not a problem. We wanted to give you an opportunity to ask. Now we see it's probably not the best time to do it in this particular meeting, but I hope Mr. Willis will continue to communicate with you after, uh, he leaves the podium. And hopefully, we all can leave here with a better understanding. We certainly appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Hope to have you to come back.
Yes, sir, anytime.
Did y'all give a number or something who they supposed to call? Because, you know, being beyond the public, if somebody arguing work, how they supposed to just call to the admin building now? Or do we have a number posted where they can contact who they need to contact?
Well, I'm sure there's something, you could call the admin building. I'll call C C I directly. But if we don't have anything on the website, we will go ahead and get something and, so people can inquire.
So you should have some cards that actually tell you how to, uh, purchase a permit or, uh, an application for doing the permit? This little card gives a website and steps. You just have to hand those out. Those, that office number is on there, they can call with any questions, schedule inspections or anything. So you should have those cards, yes, ma'am.
Cause you can bring some to the sheriff's office, uh, you know, cause over here in case somebody want to know what I do.
Yes, ma'am, I'll get y'all to bring some over too.
Okay.
Well, South Island, we, we're going to be okay here.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to Mr. Willis and Mr. Byrd, thank you, understanding?
Could I ask one more quick question before I leave and I'll be out of your hair?
Okay, so since you're here, we're going to give you the opportunity, go ahead, sir.
Yes, when I came in to vote this year, besides voting for the candidates, you have quite a number of questions at the end. One of them concerned, Tactite for increasing the fire department's payroll, EMS, the police department and all that. But then in that same question, which had to be a yes or no question, you were asked to vote to fill the $500,000 swimming pool. So if I wanted to give a raise to the police department, which I think they deserve, as well as the fire department, as well as the EMS that has helped me through my cancer, I could not vote yes because I couldn't agree with a half a million dollar swimming pool that the Allen Dale Water Works has sent letters out to everybody telling them not to drink the water and not to cook with it to fill that pool. And how are they going to fill the swimming pool up?
And that was on our referendum. And, uh, I don't know exactly if that particular, well, the referendum was passed, so if, if it was on there, it's, it's on there. Now, uh, we've got to see if the, if the money come in. I don't know exactly how far down the list if we're going to get to it in this particular round of, uh, of, uh, funding. But I think the water system, the town and the regional water system, that we hoped the town would have at least do the study to improve our system, you know, that kind of fell apart. But to answer the question on how do you fill a swimming pool with the water that we have in this community, I think it can be done, but we got to wait to see how it's going to be done.
So you're hoping to put in a new field crashing system or something to clean the water up?
I would say from the county's standpoint of view, we will leave that up to the town. But as a citizen of the county, I think we all certainly can have some input on how, what the town and how they move forward with their water system improvement.
I certainly do appreciate your time and allowing me to come in and ask those questions in a big county.
Well, we, 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 we all feel like you took time to be here, so we wanted to make certain you had an opportunity. So thank you.
You got our opportunity, thank you.
Okay. We're down to council report. And we're going to go with our vice chair, Mr. Chaney.
Mr. Chairman, I have one report and that's from the sheriff's department. Apparently, I've been touching it for, for a while and I've been hitting that little thing, but I didn't realize it was right in front of me. Judy, thank you. First, I want to commend the sheriff department on what they do as far as litter control goals. They have been making quite a few litter cases. And, and that's something that, as you ride around the county, you see traffic from all sides of the road and stuff. And the sheriff department has been catching those individuals that have been doing that and be truly appreciate them. Have a couple of pictures for some litter that they caught a fella trying to dump within our county and, council. And, uh, I thank you for being able to apprehend those suspects and charging them in reference to the litter cases. On the calls that the sheriff department made this, uh, month so far, they had a total of calls for service was 32. That's for the county within the city, but they also patrol the city. They had 97 calls. They made 257 traffic stops. And they had, 241 tickets were issued. They arrested 22 individuals. And like I said, littering case, they had eight littering cases. I think the final net was, uh, was 880 pounds of litter that they caught the individual with. It was like, I forgot, what, what was the fee, the final of those things?
It was $1,000 and $250.
Okay.
We kept all that?
We get some of it.
The ordinance ain't passed yet.
I'm going to drop that in my report if it on there.
Okay.
All right.
And he have, um, the animal shelter has, they had 14 caught in animal shelter, 11 dogs were captured and five were sent to rescue. And they have 28 dogs at the shelter, a total of 168 calls for escorts, civil matters, welfare checks and call handled by phone. And there was a total of 11 traffic accidents within our county and in the city. So I think the sheriff department is doing a wonderful job within the city limits of Allen Dale and also in the county of Allen Dale. And like I said before, we commend them on the job that they do, sheriff, and continue to do the job that, um, you were elected to do and we appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Amen. Thank you, Vice Chair Chaney. Down to Mr. Connolly.
Yeah, just to follow up on the, um, ordinance, I know, I think two months ago I asked, um, Administrator Killian and Attorney Sanders to get with the sheriff and his litter patrol people to, to come up with a new ordinance for litter and illegal dumping. And I spoke to Clay earlier and if you would, you give us a quick update?
I started to gather, um, a couple of ordinances that I'm familiar with that I think would be good for us to, and I'm not above plagiarism, if somebody's done a good job, I'm not, I'm not going to have to worry about rewriting it myself. Uh, so what I intend to do is take some of the, the good parts of those, two or three that I've got my hands on, try to draft something for Mr. Sanders to do and put it in our format. And then, uh, Wyatt will sit down with the sheriff and his folks to make sure that it's something he can enforce, that, that makes sense for him, um, so that we can get that done locally. Instead of reinventing, reinventing the wheel, I'm trying to find those good ideas out there that already exist. Cause there's a fair number of litter orders that's already around the state, particularly in the bigger counties.
I know you've got a lot going on, but can we hold your feet to the wire to get that for us next month?
I'll try to have you first reading the ordinance next week.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you. Um, next, uh, just like to proudly announce that Hampton Lumber, um, site work has begun. It started this week and they're moving fast. I know I drive by there every morning before going to work and what, what those guys can do on a day is, is amazing. Uh, so we're excited about that. S C A is going to have a groundbreaking, uh, ceremony on the site, um, November the 5th at 11 a.m. Government Master is going to be in town to, to help with that, um, ceremony. So looking forward to that, hope everybody can come out. Uh, from the fire department, um, August, we didn't have a, a report in August. They had 30 calls for service, September had 24. I spoke to Chief Stanley today, he's going to have an email coming out in the next week or so, to set up a meeting with Skip Sterling, he's the guy that we've hired to help us with our I S O evaluation. So look for that email soon. Next on EMS, I'd like to thank Liz Saab and his crew for, for hosting a, um, I guess it was an EMS social, I think they called it, invited council and administrator to come. And they, they shared with us their long-term vision for Allen Dale County Rescue and Allen Dale County EMS. I'm not going to get into specifics, but they got some, some great ideas. And, uh, I hope it's something that council will support, because I think it's much needed. To do the ordinance. And next, um, I had some out of town friends and family visit, uh, about three weeks ago. And they were coming in on 641 from the Walterboro side. And they crossed over the county line and here's a broke down Allen Dale County sign that's faded and you can't read it. And it's, it's falling apart and not blaming anybody for it. I think these signs were great when we got them. They unfortunately are not lasting, um, the way I hoped they would. But, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would hope that, um, maybe you would maybe appoint a committee to, to look into maybe redoing our county signs and making them a little more presentable and something to be proud of. You know, when they came in, it was like, you know, Matthews, this is, you know, you're on county council, is this what, this is what you want people to, to remember when they're coming into your county? And to be honest with you, I hadn't paid a whole lot of attention, I went down the road and looked at it and, uh, it's quite embarrassing. So I think we need to address that, it'd be something we could do for not a big expense and I think it'd make a difference.
Matt, I agree, I've been getting on a town of Allen Dale. I ride the town just like Matt does in county. And I see a lot of signage and I've mentioned it more than once here and I think it's about time we move forward. There's some money available. I, Mr. Terran I, we've had this conversation about a good sign machine. He talked about maybe doing some things with some folks in Charleston. But I think we need, and I will ask, and I will appoint a committee to, to work with C T C. And because from my understanding, there's money to purchase a machine. And I'm sure that will come with training the person to run that machine. And also will come with the metal and other material necessary to make the signage. So I would ask, uh, that, uh, a personal committee, Mr. Wyatt to head it up and ask Matt on the public safety side to work with C T C. Bring us a recommendation. I would say not bring us a recommendation, bring us a path forward. Okay?
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, very good. Mr. Wyatt?
Sure, uh, Mr. Chairman and council. Um, once again, I'd like to thank, um, Mr. Willis for coming, taking, uh, time out of his busy schedule. Um, not only, uh, did he come tonight to our meeting, he stopped by one of our, uh, commercial projects in the county, to have a discussion about that. Um, I also want to, once again, thank, um, uh, our deputy administrator, William Robinson, for, uh, providing information, um, regarding the building permits and also Mr. Willis for providing that information. I attended the, um, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, meeting on October 6th. And that's one of the things that, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission was concerned about, just having a better communication, dialogue and, um, transparent information about the permitting process in the county so that we can, uh, we can promote residential building and also commercial building. There are a lot of opportunities in our county. Uh, we definitely want our county to grow, uh, so that's what we're going to look to do in the future. I just wanted to bring that, uh, to the forefront and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Council, one more chance?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. On, on Wednesday, October 22nd, uh, at the Brand Building here in Allen Dale, Ms. Wendy, I put my glasses on. Ms. Sidney Canard will be there, um, to meet with the citizens of Allen County and officials, um, county officials, county officials for an assessment, needs assessment for the county. Right now, because of this agency, um, they awarded the town of Allen Dale $2.9 million for their water treatment plant. So right now, we are available to receive more funds. There are millions of dollars out there that we can get, uh, for projects in Allen Dale. I mean, if the county needs, uh, fire hydrants, you know, you can request that at that meeting or, you know, water lines or, um, I think also it was mentioned that we could get generators if, uh, if there's a need for generators in the county. But at this meeting, um, Ms. Canard will be there to hear what your concerns are. And she will take the information and she will write the grant to get the money. You don't have to write the grant. All you have to do is let her know what our needs are. And this is going to happen on the 22nd of, uh, October at the Brand Building at 5 o'clock. So I am, uh, suggesting that as many persons that count attend that assessment and provide information of whatever, just be thinking about what our needs are in the county and that we can request that at that meeting. And she will take the information back. So, you know, Allen County is not the only county, you know, they're having the meetings, so they're giving out millions of dollars in several counties. But right now, they've already started on the water treatment plant in Allen Dale. And they've been given $2.9 million to complete that project. So I'm sure, we've heard about, I'm in previous meetings about, uh, So I'm sure, we've heard about, I'm in previous meetings about uh uh biohydrants, is that right, Mrs. Conard? That we were, do we need biohydrants?
Um, not sure.
Well, one of the things I think we need from the county standpoint is our water water tank, that needs to be replaced. And uh so we're gonna do an assessment or give a list of what needs to be done. That water tank will be top of my list, because we've been told more than once that water tank needs replacing, it needs repair. So if we can, we can get money through this grant to do it, then I would say that would be my, that would be my go-to project, you know, in this assessment. In light of the fact that the town pretty much has set an all to to their study, I think it's more important that we it's it's more important that we do what we can from the county standpoint to help improve our water system. So, Lieutenant didn't mean to cut in on that, but I I think there is a need for the assessment and right now that water tank would be my top priority.
Well, if there are any more concerns, you know, recommending that you be at that uh meeting on the twenty-second of October, five o'clock?
This is for municipalities also?
Yes. Yes. And of course, you know, like me, for an example, if there's something that's that's needed in Ulmer or St. Mary or Marne or whatever area you live in. And if if you know it, well, there's a need for something, then you need to come to that meeting to let Miss Conard know. So that she could receive the information and of course she will write the grant uh for the money. And also at our last meeting, um we talked about the park equipment in Fairfax, I don't know, do you have an update on that? No. Well, whenever um whenever the decision is made about um the park and the park equipment, um I'm asking that the park equipment, because it has to be um moved to county property. And I'm asking that it be removed to Thomas Cohen Park um until we find out where we're gonna put it. At our last meeting, I recommended that we put it at a park and and keep it there until we um on the uh earmark that we received for the fire station, there was al- also information, our money's on there for a park in uh St. Mark. So I'm asking that the the equipment be housed at the Thomas Cohen at Thomas Cohen Park until the park is ready in St. Mark. And I'm asking council for that, uh playground equipment be moved to St. Mark. Whenever, whenever the uh, whatever you're doing um for that park, I don't know, what what exactly, what are we waiting on?
On the development of that park.
In Fairfax, the park in Fairfax.
I have no idea what the the process is.
Mr. Sanders?
You know, we had a a joint use agreement with the owner, he's actually sold the the property to another private company. So now the the park equipment has to be moved, because it's no longer a park, to the um to county property. And what the county's got to decide is, you know, they've got to get, to see what the cost is gonna be to move it.
Laurie did some uh investigation in that she has a a figure, she has a price uh to move the property uh that is what matters. So so what do we do? Bring it back to council and let council know what it costs? So, I mean, what is the procedure?
Well, if you if you want to move it, it makes it makes sense to move it to where it's gonna be the first time, multiple times if we can. But we'd have to decide where to put it, uh and if it can be extracted without being damaged to the point that it can't be even put back in. That was some of the challenges we had with our park, um where the water splash pads going in and playground equipment just went in. So most of that equipment is probably not salvageable anyway, but I don't know what this this property looks like.
This is fairly new equipment, only a few years, really.
We can move anything, whether or not it's left intact, be put back in the ground is another story, because most of those things are set in concrete. And then you got a whole bunch of busting up of concrete and foundations to do, because that's something that holds those, that's gonna, if it's a big playground. So we'll just have to see what it would take to move it, um and we can we can get a price for that.
Well, Mr. Kilian, are you um suggesting that whenever it's moved, it's moved to where it's gonna be at? No?
That would, I would not wanna reset it someplace and then reset it again, that we can store it. But I don't know how long the grant that got the money for, that paid paid for the park equipment allows for it to not be in use.
Well, I have I have a question, uh uh on the earmark that that we received for the fire station, uh there's money there for a park in St. Mark. So should we go ahead and purchase the land with that money?
If if we know what we're doing.
I mean, should we go ahead and purchase the land for um that park?
Yes, I mean.
Can we go forward with that?
Earmark, money earmark for that particular project, there's no reason why, if we got the funds, the funds are there, we just got to decide how big a park we're talking about. We're talking about five acres, two acres, or ten acres, you know? And, you know, once we determine that, then if the funds are there, we certainly, I don't have a problem with entering into kind of purchase agreement.
Well, I'm speaking of the the funds, that's what I was earmarking.
Yes, I'm speaking of the same funds, yeah.
Yeah, for that.
But what I'm saying, let's decide how big we want the park to be. Do we say five acres, ten acres, or two acres or what?
No, I think that's, that's.
It don't need to be five or ten acres. It might be one acre or maybe. Mr. Terran's gonna have to be one to maintain it, so I would get some comment from him before I go buy a ten-acre park to maintain it.
Well, that's why we need to be very specific. I don't know, one acre, two acres, how big?
Well, council will have to decide that, but um we've had a conversation with the persons that sold us the land for the fire station, they're willing to sell some of the land. So council will have to decide how much land um to ask them for.
I think between the owners and also the citizen in that area, they should have an input. They may just want a small park, maybe one acre, acre and a half, or two acres. I certainly would like to hear from them too.
That's fine.
Very good.
And so do you want the citizens to come to council, or you want us to go to them, how you want that done?
I think we could, on our website, we could ask for citizen input in establishing a park in St. Mark and just wanna have some idea on what they think. Yeah. I mean, we're gonna make the final decision, but yes, if you're gonna put a a park in my neighborhood, I certainly would like to have some understanding or some idea or say-so on how big I want it.
Well, I when I was thinking about the park, I was thinking about the playground equipment and stuff.
Yes, yes, not a baseball field?
Not a baseball field.
Okay, so we're talking about a small area?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because the park in Fairfax is only a few lots.
A few lots?
A few lots, yes.
So you're only talking about what, a hundred by a hundred?
I don't think there's that much equipment there.
Of course not.
It's not that much equipment?
I don't think it is.
Mr. Chairman, I I think when you're asking the public how much land you wanna buy, I don't know, just my opinion, no disrespect, but I don't know if that's the best way to go about it.
Well, I think just.
I think the I think the Recreation Department and Public Works should get together and figure out what would work for a park and what's feasible and what's maintainable and and let them bring back a recommendation.
And I don't have a problem with that either, with that either, but I do think if I was in that area, you if you come and say, I'm gonna put a park and don't ask me how big I want it, then I I would I would have some concern about that. You know, I may want a small park.
So if all of them come back, say they want ten acres, you're gonna?
No, we're not gonna do that. I think it's it's worthy to respect the fact that we're gonna go into their area and establish a park. Whether we honor what they want or not, it's a matter of curiosity. Hey, John, we're gonna put a park here, how big do you want this thing to be? And John may say, I don't care, then Mary over here may say, well, I only want this thing to be about a half an acre, that's enough.
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, can I ask this question?
Yeah.
Okay, um on the, I think it was the twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen sales tax, was that sales tax? Um there was money there for a community center in in St. Mark and also in Appleton.
Oh, yeah, we had.
So if you wanna purchase land for the park, should you just purchase a land for the community center and the park?
I think we have to go back and uh get with Walter. Walter and re- revisit those particular uh.
I'm just asking for information.
Yeah, I think we gotta look at it.
To put the park near the community center.
Do what now?
I said, we're good to put the park next to the community center, really.
Yeah.
One park is that, because you know, that's a very rural area, just put it out in the middle of nowhere, nobody's gonna use it.
I think the big question, do we have enough money to build a community center?
I mean, I'm just saying.
Is the money there?
I don't know what time, but questions you said.
I'm talking about the money that's on the ones that sales tax.
I know, but if we didn't collect it, then it's just means there.
We've collected everything from sales tax one and sales tax two has started, sales tax one ended April thirtieth, sales tax two started.
Did we, did we collect what we projected?
Uh actually, a little bit more, I think.
So it should be there.
But we don't, we still don't want our estimate, Tori.
Still not enough to build a park, so.
More than what we projected, I thought it was less than one hundred, you said you did that, I may be wrong.
I can't remember, but I think so, I think it was a little more, but that's why my my mind over here, I hear them talking, but you know me, I'm thinking, where the money? I hear earmark and it's on this list, but show me the money.
No, the earmark money is there, but we hadn't spent it, no, we didn't spend that money anymore, we didn't spend the earmark money.
That one point two million?
I mean, we spent some of it, one point two million.
That one point two million?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, that one point two million, where we done spent eight hundred and something thousand dollars out of it and you won't pay?
Wait, why don't?
That's all I'm asking.
Okay, and I I think that's good to know, but I think, let's say we put another discussion, okay? I think that's something I like to see, uh councilwoman Jennings, yourself along with Clay and Walter get together and see exactly, tabulate the funds. Whether it's one, sales tax one, or sales tax two, plus earmark, and see what we have.
So right now, okay, for the land, um so we're just gonna be looking at how much land that we can get or what we're gonna decide on, how much land we're gonna ask for, an acre, two acres or whatever.
I think your committee should be looking at that and make a recommendation. And I know that's your district and you you you're certainly in tune with the residents of that area. And I would advise you touch base with them and let them know that, hey, we're coming with a a park and it's gonna be one acre, two acre and see what they say, you know?
I'll get some information, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, and the um, I have another question about uh Mr. San, Attorney Sanders, uh Brindia Smith Street in Martin.
Well, the problem has been, you know, the legislature hasn't been in session and they have to pass something, so we're probably looking at the first of the year before that we finalize.
Before it's finalized, because uh Mr. Goos back there with his arms crossed back there, so I don't I don't want him to carry, I want to carry the correct information back to the Martin community, because we've been waiting for a while, you know, and I understand Senator Hunter was sick and.
When we decided to do it, I contacted, you know, their officers immediately and, you know, that was towards the end of the legislative session this year. And then Senator Hunter, you know, had some medical problems, so.
Yes.
So it didn't get done this session, so that's what I anticipated. But I have been in in contact with Senator Hunter's office, the lady in his office is who handles that. And she coordinates it with um, you know, with Lonnie, Ozzie, and and the senator. So it's probably gonna be the first of the year, but let's just jump on back into session until January.
And um at our last county uh meet, county council meeting, um there was a discussion about renting the leisure center out. And some figures was presented to the council and which chairman thought it was too too much money. But that, I think the county has uh already had something in place to rent a brand building. And they were using that same um, the same policy. And it was five hundred dollars, I believe, but I think it was two hundred and fifty dollar deposit and they would get that money back. So they would only be charging persons two fifty to use the leisure center.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, the two hundred and fifty dollars would be returned to them.
Yeah, I was just thinking.
If that was in order.
And that's, that's finally, that's what council wanna do, but I was just thinking in terms of the the capacity of the leisure center versus the capacity of the brand building. It's probably, it's a lot of difference in terms of seating and what have you.
Well, one of the things that they were looking at, Mr. Chairman, is that, and I think it was, I mean, this policy was already in place, I got a counsel, even with the brand building. You know, I don't think that you should just give a person a key and nobody's there to oversee what is going on in that building. Because over the years, we've been missing tables and we've been missing chairs and nobody's there.
Sure.
You know, nobody's there for the county, you just give the citizens a key and tell them they can use the building. And so when the chairs and tables disappear, we don't know where they are. So the leisure center, you know, for the leisure center, they were looking at, you know, hiring a county employee from Public Works or someplace. Or for the center to be there while an event is going on. And that way, everything would be in place where they need it. I mean, that was one of the things that we're looking at, of course, county council would have to approve that, but um.
If that, at that kind of rate of two hundred and fifty dollars for three to four hours event, yeah, you should be able to pay someone, a county employee, to to uh to be there. And inspect before and after. So if that's a recommendation that will come, I I think this council will support it.
Councilman, would you report it just add?
I think if that's a recommendation, I'm sure council will support that.
Mr. Chairman, I saw that you let us develop a rental policy based on the real cost of what it takes to put somebody in that building and bring that back to you next month for for review.
That'd be great.
Uh you might find it's a little bit more expensive than you think it is, because we we looked at that in Aiken when I was there. And the costs were so high, we decided not to let anybody rent any of our buildings.
Okay.
Um because they weren't gonna do any of it. But if we can bring a recreation employee in or somebody else that will come in and open the building, probably needs to stay at the building for just security reasons, so that the local sheriff's department doesn't need to or whatever. And then, you know, so much per hour and we can we can put a policy together.
Very good, we need that.
Would you be doing that for the um rent?
It'll be, it'll be a senior policy that will cover all your buildings. And wherever you, wherever you rent out, it'll just come with a consistent policy that says that the deposit of X amount, so much an hour for the employee to be there. And then if there's not, you know, we'll come up with something, but essentially if they do damage the building, they don't get the deposit back, things like that, we just we just need to formalize that process. We just, we just need to formalize that process.
You might consider adding rentals insurance to that. So if they damage it, they, they'd be covered with the rental insurance.
And, um, I have one more question.
Sure.
I received, I received some information which I, um, this week, from the formal, well, I didn't receive it, I received it through the former superintendent of education, um, Dr. Gilmore, stated that before she left, that she approved or was approved to give the CBV foundation ten thousand dollars. Did, did we receive that? The ten thousand dollars?
Ten million?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand?
Yes.
Who does this was coming from?
Dr. Gilmore, she's the former superintendent of education.
I thought it was ten million.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah. I thought, that's what I read on the, on the thing.
Ten million from the school? I thought it was ten thousand.
It was ten thousand.
Ten thousand, okay. Maybe I looked at her wrong.
I must have missed that, I think. Ten thousand instead of just a dollar.
And she also said that, you know, she, she told the president superintendent that she was, uh, selling the CBV school to the county for one dollar. So was, was, don't you, did you know anything about that, or is it in council?
No, I don't know anything about that.
The ten thousand dollars, you know?
No, I do not.
Council, Mr. County?
Yeah. My response was wonderful, but I, I was, I was saying wonderful to ten million.
Now, do you know, ten, ten thousand dollars? Is it there, any way we can find out?
I don't think they have written a check and gave it to the county for that. I don't think so yet, because I probably still in negotiation or whatever y'all were in, but I don't think a check came from the school to the county for that.
And you would know that, wouldn't you? But it was ten million.
Ten million.
It was ten million.
I hope I would know, but, but I don't remember it. I don't, but I can look, I'll look and see if they did a deposit from the school for that.
Okay, sounds great.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jennings, and in light that we have so much, so much other items, I just wanna quickly say that, you know, we are moving quickly with our, uh, audit. And Clay will talk a little bit about that. Hopefully our audit will be, uh, will be complete very soon. There's a lot of things going on in the county. Walter and I kinda corresponded a little bit and, uh, there was some question about the, uh, Low Savannah River Alliance property, the county property. I know Walter, if you look at it the way I did, it looks like we own the whole thing. And, uh, but there was some questions about that. Uh, we did have a Low Savannah council, a government meeting. By the way, Mrs. Major, we miss you. It was here last, last Thursday. Uh, we had a record turnout. It's probably, uh, probably one of the best turnout for regional six county meeting that we've had in a long time, so we're happy to see the locals that came out. A lot of, a lot of good things going on. From that, you heard Mrs. Jennings talk about the assessment. The young lady that, uh, heads that up for the call gave a presentation on that. I'm hoping between Clay and William, they will go ahead and, and make certain, look at that water system, water tank specifically, so we can go ahead and move forward on that. Also, we got a TAC committee meeting that's gonna be next Wednesday, twenty second. Uh, gonna be in Orangeburg, it's gonna, it's gonna be on Zoom, so hopefully, uh, we have two other members other than myself that will attend. There's a lot happening in our transportation system. We heard from our secretary of DOT on Tuesday and there's a lot of things coming down that's affecting us, what we're doing. Three oh one bridge, Allen Hill County was mentioned specifically, there's some, there's some bridge work going on, so just be mindful, uh, of some of the things that you're gonna be running into. I noticed there was a lot more traffic on two seven eight now and one twenty five because of the highway three work. There will continue to be more work on highway three, so just be, uh, certainly awareed of that. And, uh, lastly, we do have a housing.
Mr. Chairman, before you go forward, I made an error. You were correct, it was ten million.
Okay.
But I, I mean, she said that she's, she's secured ten million, so how do we go back yet on the ten million?
We'll look into that and, uh, but if I was gonna give you ten million, I would probably would have given it to you before I left, you know? So we'll see. That's good to know. This particular housing study was done by SRS CRO. Excuse me? And I think a lot of the locals had some input in that. I know Ann was part of, uh, the CRO. They've done a lot of extensive regional housing study and, uh, I would say, take a look at it and see where we are. And we're not the only one that in Diney the housing, you know, it's out where we're not reaching. Affordable housing, that's the thing. And we're gonna have a retreat with the CRO in early November and hopefully come back with some ideas on how we can tackle that, if you know, outreach it. Lastly, I know we got on, come Saturday, we have the youth night out, police night out, national youth night.
Night out, trunk or treat.
Trick or treat. Trunk or treat, okay.
On three to six at the old Greenmarket, Highway two seventy eight.
And you need volunteers to come out and, and pass out candy?
Hey, any help is always appreciated.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right, that's council report. We're down to Mr. Kitleham.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be as brief as possible. The first thing, uh, just wanna remind council of the Southern Carolina Alliance event next Thursday, um, at Swiftwater Country Club, you can play in the golf tournament or you can check your marksmanship skills. Registration for both of those events starts at noon. Uh, if you don't want to be either one of those, you can go to the reception, uh, at five thirty, uh, at Swiftwater Country Club. This is, uh, one of their business and industry fog route and pool and, um, it's a networking event, so just want to make sure you have that on your calendar. The CTC has gone into an agreement or will sign an agreement with Jay Brad Consulting, Jennifer Brad Consulting, to do improvements on Evie Street, Amelia Street and Buford Avenue. Uh, Ms. Brad is a, my engineer, she'll do the design, construction, uh, bid documents, uh, construction, infrastructure, and the whole amount of the cost is, uh, thirty thousand dollars and the CTC, um, is, is paying for that work. Spoke, had a meeting with Snyder Electric yesterday. Uh, they're gonna do what they call a business case review for us. Uh, William spoke to them at the City County Management Conference. Uh, we, I met with them yesterday and what they're essentially gonna do is look at all of our, they're gonna analyze our data for electrical, gas usage, phone usage to see where we are and then they will make a proposal to us to see how we can maybe reduce some of those costs in operations. I know that we have certain situations where we probably have phone lines that we're still paying for, uh, that probably aren't in use. Uh, that's not unusual for any county. Uh, so, uh, this might be a, a step in the right direction in finding us a way to, uh, induce some of our operating costs going forward. Uh, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned the, uh, audit. I did get word from the outside auditor today that he thought he would have it in less, in no more than three weeks for us and that's gonna be very important for us to, to get that document because, uh, one of the items on your agenda in just a little bit is officially authorizing me to work with our bond counsel and, and, um, financial advisor to begin the borrower process for the sales tax two bond. Uh, voters authorized up to three million dollars. Based on what our collections look like, we'll be able to pay that back. We're trying to figure out cash flow right now and see how to structure the bond to be able to pay it back with the proceeds of the sales tax items. Uh, so that process, it's already started, but you're gonna make it official in just a few minutes, uh, or at least I would expect you to. And then very quickly, I do have a finance update that I'm gonna, um, each, give each of your copy of. Mr. Shane Kirkley has been with us now for about three weeks, maybe a month. He's been on site two days, um, but, uh, he's working remotely. But if you will, I'll, I'll very quickly run through this letter that he addressed to you. I see two, they've completed an evaluation of the county's current accounting system as part of the preparation for software implementation and chart account setup. Based on our view of FY twenty twenty five activity, we determined that the county is not currently recording revenues and expenditures in alignment with the adopted budget, which is organized by department. As a result, the existing chart accounts cannot be reliably, reliably used for conversion into the new software system. To address this, we recommend creating a new chart of accounts modeled on the budget, uh, recommended creating a new chart of accounts modeled on the budget brought by council for twenty five, twenty six. This new structure will provide a foundation for accurate financial reporting and improved accountability. The draft chart has been developed and is currently under review by Springbrook, the county's software vendor. And when he says that, that, that's mostly, well, they've got all the charts or all the accounts and they're trying to figure out how to put that into their system to make it work for our system.
Now, what we're gonna have to do is create our own system based on our budget.
Well, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
And then they will mesh, Springbrook will mesh what we have.
Yeah, um, and of course, treasurer's using QS one and we're working to put all of that into, be able to talk to each other.
Sure.
Now, to the point you just made, Shane sent me today our checks that were written for August and September and he's asked me to plug that into the, whatever the line item is in the budget, so my weekend work is to plug in his, his checks into our budget so then he can then start assigning accounts to each of them.
And that's moving forward.
That is moving forward. Uh, that has been my top priority since I've been here. In addition, we've outsourced our payroll processing. We did our first, uh, payroll at Paycor last weekend. As far as I know, we didn't have any real big glitches, um, but the payroll vendor he has provided then the payroll account, charge, charge account numbers, so they can start putting that into their system, uh, so they'll be working from the new charge accounts almost immediately. But we've gotta get that throughout our budget so that when department heads send them a request for, to buy tires for the sheriff's department, they'll know that it needs to come out of the maintenance account from the sheriff's department, not just out of the sheriff's department. Uh, so we're working through that whole process. Uh, the implementation of the new software is scheduled to begin in late October and continue through year end. This transition will establish a more consistent and transparent accounting process with the goal of providing the county with monthly budget to actual reports and reconciled bank accounts beginning in early twenty six. So they're gonna continue to work with us, uh, with me and, um, our finance team, uh, but I wanna make sure you have this letter, just so you know that, uh, I really believe the hiring, Mr. Kirkley, is a good thing for us to, to try to get some of our stuff in order. And I believe, Mr. Chairman, that is it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Killeham. Walter?
Okay, um, the, the treasurer has confirmed that the county gets received, uh, from the DOE, the free little taxes from the, uh, of eighty nine thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. We have gotten, that was for twenty four.
Okay.
Okay, and the, the other two things, um, one of us a blue blue crossing, but I see that's on the, um, an executive session, I, you know, I've got some information on that, which I'll probably have that too. And the other, the other thing we may need to talk about in executive session is the number, Mr. Morgan Kiss met with y'all last, um, month about entering to a representative agreement concerning ultra-processed food and y'all asked my recommendation, is that something you wanna discuss in executive session?
No, just go ahead. What's your recommendation on it?
My recommendation is that we enter into the agreement because it's not actually going to cost the county anything. You know, there's a potential for the county to benefit from it, but it's not gonna cost us anything. We're not gonna have to pay any of the expenses of litigation and, you know, the, it's on a contingency fee and the, the attorneys and no matter how many attorneys they have and how much their expenses are, they only get a certain percentage. The rest of it would go to the, to the county if there is a recovery. But I would recommend that the county, um, enter into it. And I would recommend they authorize you to sign the agreement on the chair present.
Since we've heard that recommendation from our attorney, Mr. Sanders, can I get a, uh, motion?
Uh-huh.
So moving properly second, that we entered to agreement on the, uh, ultra-processed food?
Uh, correct.
Legislation that will be coming forth?
No, it's, it's not legislation, it's a, it's a lawsuit where they'll be filing against numerous, you know, suppliers.
Okay, so it's not legislative.
It's probably a lawsuit, but, you know, when, when this started against the cigarette people, it was a lawsuit too.
Okay. You heard that? Not legislative, it's a lawsuit.
Right.
All in favor, let everybody know I'm saying aye?
Aye.
You got one question?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
If we enter in this lawsuit, will it prevent us from entering, you know, say if the state was to, to sue, would this prevent us from joining a, another lawsuit with, with another group?
Um, I would not think that it would, no.
Thank you. Is it, is it, is there a limo lawsuits? I mean, in terms of, you know, in terms, can you piggyback? That's what I was saying.
Sue anybody anytime, but that doesn't mean they're gonna be successful.
But one, one lawsuit should not require that you don't join another, basically. All right, all in favor?
All in favor today. I think, uh, California, but you know, California does a lot of things differently, has passed ordinances to ban all ultra-processed foods from the state.
Yeah, I think that happened last week.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All in favor? Poses? I say it. Walter, there's a couple other things we'll talk about in, in, uh, executive session. Please, we need to.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All right, old business, out of A. Second reading for acceptance of grant for economic development project, Magnolia Hampton Lumber Company.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the second reading of the acceptance of grant for economic development for project Magnolia.
Second. Moving properly second, second reading for the, yes, sir.
Can I make a point of clarification when we get to the discussion point?
Yeah.
The confusion, there's some confusion on this one and it's entirely my fault. They did not, um, there's actually two grants involved. First grant was from the Department of Commerce for three million dollars and there's a second grant from the Agriculture Department that they only sent the performance agreement from the Agriculture Department that they only sent the performance agreement and did not send the grant agreement for us to sign. So I thought the two were combined, but they're not. So you really don't need to give three readings to acceptance of the grant. You accepted the $3 million grant at your last meeting.
Right.
In fact, I've already had you sign the documents. But we do need to clearly say we're accepting the Agriculture Department's $600,000, and then I'll get the grant paperwork from them, and we'll get it properly signed. So there's actually two different grants involved.
And this is the agriculture grant?
You treat this one as the ag grant.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in my motion that we accept the performance agreement for agribusiness initiative grant for Hampton Lumber Mill.
Second. Moving properly second, that we accept the grant from Department of Agriculture, S C Department of Agriculture. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses? Aye, aye. Okay, second reading. Authorizing the execution and delivery of a credit agreement by and between Allenau County and Hampton Lumber Mills for payment of fee in lieu of taxes. It's fee in lieu agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the second reading of the ordinance for the fee in lieu agreement with Hampton Lumber Mill.
Yes, sir. Moving properly second, any question on the acceptance of the fee in lieu agreement with Hampton Lumber Company and Allenau County? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses? Aye, aye. All right, item C, in name only, an ordinance authorizing the execution and the delivery of an amended and restated solid waste service agreement with the Three Rivers Solid Waste Authority to extend the term thereof through 2050. And this is something that we talked about a couple weeks ago, you know, we have the cheapest land, land disposal, a landfill disposal rate in any community in, I would say, the Southeast. We pay probably two-thirds of what most people pay, but we got to go up. And once we go up, and this is going to be over a five-year period, you know, we're still going to be the cheapest, which is a good thing.
Yeah, I think the telling statistic there is that when you do the increase over the next five years, and when you reach that top, you'll still be below the current state average.
That's right.
And that's going to move up, too.
Oh, yeah, it's going to move up, it's going to be eighty bucks, right?
Yeah.
But anyway, this constitutes first, can I get a motion on this one? We will make certain that we get all the paperwork, so you can see how it's going to go up each year for the next five years.
Mr. Chairman, if I had our legal side, Parker Poe is representing Three Rivers, those agreements have been written.
Okay.
The actual new agreement and this ordinance and this title that's in there tonight, we actually have.
You do have it.
Probably a very close to final draft on all of them, so I don't think there's going to be a lot of changes there. We should, we'll have those in your packet for the second reading.
Okay, all right. Any question? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the execution and delivery of the amended restated solid waste agreement.
Second. Any question? Moving properly second, question? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. It constitutes our first reading. New business. Resolution authorizing the county administrator to work with the county bond council and financial advisor to prepare all documents for the borrowing, authorizing in the November the fifth, 2024 referendum to re-impose, re-impose the capital project sale tax.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the resolution authorizing the county administrator to work with the county's bond council on the capital project sales tax.
Second. Moving properly second, any question? It's got to be done, folks. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses? Aye, aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go into executive session.
We move and properly second that we go into executive session. We're going to take a five-minute break. Ms. Valerie, we need to see you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of our detention center head, Ms. Tanya Capers, to enter into agreement with Dr. Favor to offer our medical, offer our detention center medical services, subject to contractual approval by the administrator, the chairman, and the county attorney.
Second, moving properly second, that we accept the recommendation coming from Ms. Scaper, our jail administrator, on contract of service with Dr. Favor for our medical treatment. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses?
Chairman, I make a motion adjourned.
All right. Make the motion adjourned.
Do y'all need to approve that agreement that we talked about for morning?
Yeah.
I thought we already did that.
I thought we did it.
Yeah, they did it earlier.
Did it in open session.
Yeah, we did it in open session. That's all. All right. We didn't think it needed to come in exact session, so we did it in open session. I'm glad you remember that well. Make the motion adjourned.